Everyone. Oh, I'm not sure. There's, there's one right there. Um, welcome everyone. I'm going to call the February 4th, 2025 regular scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. We have, um, Mr. Donnie Shinholser, I believe, newly pastor moved here a couple, a week ago from South Carolina for the Live Oak Church of God. He's going to lead us in the prayer and then Commissioner Mobley is going to lead us in the pledge. If you all would please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we, we gather here for this county commissioner meeting, uh, this evening, Lord, and we, we just seek your, your guidance and, and Lord, we pray for your wisdom, uh, Lord, to, to be through our leadership. I pray, Lord, that you would grant, uh, discernment and I pray God that you would, uh, consider important issues that are affecting our, uh, our community. Uh, Father God, I also pray that, uh, that they would prioritize the needs of, of all the, the citizens and, and I pray, Lord, that they would make decisions and, uh, Lord, have fairness, uh, included in all of that. And Lord, we pray for a spirit of cooperation and, uh, and unity, uh, in our community, Lord. And I pray God that, that, uh, that you would, uh, just thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve, uh, and, and be a part of, uh, of this great county. And, uh, Lord, we just, uh, pray for blessings and favor to be upon this, uh, this meeting in Swanee County. And Lord, we give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Welcome, everyone. We got a full house tonight. Glad that all of you are here. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have the January 21st, 2025 tabulation meeting and the January 21st, 2025 regular board meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns, errors or omissions, um, board?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve those minutes, second by Commissioner Mobley. Uh, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Welcome, Mr. Fleming.
And Ms. Fleming.
And Ms. Fleming. He didn't hear me. He's still politicking. Look at him. He's still politicking. I said, welcome, Mr. Fleming. You ain't paying no mind. Shaking hands, kissing babies. Next item on the agenda is the public concerns and comments. I do have some comment cards here. They're no particular order. Uh, when you come to the podium, just state, state your name and address for the clerk of the court's record there. The first one I have is Mr. Frank Wing. Welcome, sir. Yes, sir. I don't have you on the agenda. Yeah, you have a comment card. That's it. But you don't have an, you don't have an item on the agenda. If you would go to the microphone so that the clerk can hear this whole conversation.
If you represent any group, then you can have seven minutes instead of-
Yes, this is for the EAA, Experimenter Association located at Swanee County Airport.
I sell the blue shirt. Some, some of you are going to speak on their behalf.
Yes, sir.
That's fine. I just don't, I don't have an agenda item, so then you, you get the seven minutes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Commissioners and, uh, Mr., uh-
Scott.
Appreciate the time to, to spend with you here. My name is Frank Wing and I represent the EA chapter at 797 at, uh, Swanee County Airport. Uh, we're here to introduce ourself to the commission and let you know, uh, different ways that we give back to the community.
If, yeah, there you go.
Is this better? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Uh, I'd like to introduce Mr. Ed Conrad. He, uh, is the president of our chapter and, uh, he represents about 125 of our members. Ed, could you stand up a minute, please, sir? Thank you.
Welcome.
We hold monthly meetings, the third Saturday of every, uh, month. Uh, we have a pie, pancake breakfast from eight to 10, which is $10. Very good. If anybody wants to stop by, they're welcome. Uh, we also have our meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning for our chapter. Uh, our chapter is very active, uh, through the Young Eagles program. We're about three times a year, our volunteer pilots give free airplane rides to kids age seven, eight to 17 years old. It's called Young Eagles. Uh, what we do is hope to spark an interest in aviation for them and, uh, give them the experience of, uh, flight. We also, uh, and actually, I, I'd like to say that the experience lasts a lifetime. I remember my first airplane ride when I was 15, just like it was yesterday. But, uh, anyway, there are people at the airport also working towards starting an aviation maintenance program that might interest you or your friends or family. And I'm told that it's, that there is actually a shortage of A and Ps, so, which stands for air, airplane and power craft, for airplanes. So they're basically aircraft, uh, mechanics. So, uh, our members are also very, uh, active in major events all over Live Oak and Swanee County. Uh, for example, uh, Saturday, 11 of our, uh, volunteers worked the all aboard event at the train station and gave rides in our kitty car, uh, 260 rides. Basically what they are is an aviation themed little car that we pull behind a, a UVA, if anybody's seen that. And, uh, anyway, it's gone over real big. Another thing we did was, uh, a couple of our, uh, members went out and bought a couple of brand new bicycles and, uh, raffled them off at it and a couple of kids went home with brand new bikes. And it was a win-win situation. We had a, a break even on it and a couple of kids got a bike. So it's a good win-win situation there. So, uh, I just wanted to say in summary, uh, we're very proud of our members that make our community a better place to live. Part of it, what we want to talk about also tonight is, uh, our, uh, chapter is forming, uh, a committee to deal with airport issues. We have, our lately, we've had, uh, members asking if we can get more involved and talk about air, aircraft. So, uh, I'd like to lay a little bit of groundwork. Oh, first off, I'd like to say, Ed, our president has asked me to, uh, chair a committee for that and I look forward to working with our airport manager, John, to whom, so, uh, first I'd like to lay a little groundwork, uh, sources of revenue for Swanee County Airport. And, uh, for some of the residents that might not understand funding, I just wanted to tell them, contrary to belief, airports are not funded through our property taxes at all. They're funded through, uh, various other ways. One way is through fuel sales for aircraft. Just for example, a, a normal aircraft might, might take anywhere between 30 and 80 gallons for a small general aviation aircraft. So that's, that's quite a bit of fuel. Five bucks a gallon, put the math to it. So, uh, also another way airports, uh, get money would be through airport improvement programs, something through the FAA where, uh, it, it improves runways, taxis, lights, that type of stuff. Another way of funding is through, uh, Florida Department of Transportation for fuel farms and, and refueling equipment. So there's two different grants there that, uh, can benefit the airport. And, uh, what people need to know is, uh, what, uh, determines the amount of, uh, money through grants that the airport can receive is something called operations, which means takeoffs and landings. So for every takeoff and landing, the airport gets credit at the end of the year and based on that number, they get more money to, to make improvements at our airport. So keep in mind, operations means landings and takeoffs. Okay? We have a simple win-win solution that we think could really help out. Uh, when our local community doesn't interface with the county, how would you know what issues are important to us if we don't let you know? So first issue we would like to discuss is the airport hangars or lack of availability. There's approximately 32 hay, T-hangers and, uh, many of them are filled with unair, airworthy aircraft. And you say, well, what's airworthy mean? Uh, the way the FAA works is that an aircraft has to be inspected once a year. Uh, they'll go through everything and then it'll be signed off by a FAA inspector and that way it can be legal to fly. Okay? Uh, for example, one example I'd like to mention is a man from Orlando showed up at the airport and spoke to one of our members and stated that he hasn't been here for over two years. Your plane has three flat tires, that much dust on it. Okay? So there's another one that's, uh, hasn't been flown for five years that people are aware of and have talked about at the airport here. So our question would be is, you know, how, how can that help the health of our airport when they're not flying, if they're not buying fuel and if they're not contributing to the number of, uh, operations, landings and takeoffs? So, uh, what we'd like to say is that we, we understand the commissioners probably aren't aware of these examples because all of these, uh, hangars are already leased. I mean, you get, you get the money every month and it's coming in and you think you're all maxed out as far as what you could be making on it. Uh, but really what, what we're failing to look at is all the lost revenue from fuel that could be sold and from operations that could be if we had active people in those, uh, hangars. So, uh, in summary, even though all the hangars are currently rented, the county could be making a lot more revenue in fuel sales and operational credits if we had members of our local aviation community in those hangars. So in closing, I'd like to say that, uh, the citizens of Swanee County are very fortunate to have such a beautiful airport. The grounds, everything, building, its maintenance is just very nice, very impressive. My wife and I, uh, are both retired and private pilots. We, we're very fortunate to, uh, live on the southwest side of the airport. Our property borders on 139th Street. So, uh, we see, we have a front row seat to air operations all day long. And, uh, we think that for the size of the airport, there's a lot of days that there isn't a whole lot of traffic. And, uh, it appears that most of the traffic is transient, meaning not based at Swanee County Airport. They're flying in from other places where they want to get fuel or stop and take a break or whatever, but it doesn't seem like there's that many planes that are actually based at Swanee that are, we see fly. And we watch it every day. We see a lot of neat stuff in the way of military and everything. So, uh, anyway, so, uh, also, uh, from what we've heard, there are approximately 10, 10 to 12 names on the waiting list for a T-hanger. And I personally have been on the list for about eight months and our plane is currently sitting on the ramp and baking in the sun.
Let me just, we're over our seven minute mark and we got a lot of people here, but let me, I'm going to have some discussion with you really quick. I guess, because you're right, I don't know that all the commissioners up here know exactly what's going on out there. And I guess what you're saying is, is albeit the airport may have some good tenants, because obviously they're paying their bills, they may not be contributing tenants.
Absolutely, sir. That's exactly what I'm getting at.
So I guess that what I would have to do is defer that to staff to say, in our, I'm assuming we probably have lease, lease agreements with those tenants.
Yes, sir.
And, and I guess the question will be, either from you or from this board, is in our lease agreements with the, what are the requirements? Do they have to buy fuel? Do they have to, you know, contribute and use their plane? So, I mean, I think that that's where you're going with that, if, if I'm right?
Yes, sir. From what I understand, you're in the, uh, in the process of rewriting the, the lease agreement. And we would also ask that we might be able to be included in that just, just because it's nice to have a pilot's perspective also.
Oh, 100%. And I would defer that to either our county attorney or county administrator to maybe bring some of you guys into the loop of that. But as far as asking us board members exactly, you know, who those tenants are and how come they're not using it, I mean, we couldn't answer those questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just to illuminate the board, because the question was brought up. Uh, Mr. DuHaim is quite aware of the, the issue that there's a long waiting list to get hangars and that there are folks who seem to have not used it. Uh, he's brought that to my attention, quite frankly, wanting to help you guys out to the extent that he can. Uh, so I'm going to raise my hand and say I'm the bad guy. Um, because the issue is, is when people are paying their lease, then they're paying their lease and we can't, you know, unless we're, and we don't have the right to go in and just start inspecting and saying, hey, you have to use your airplane X number of days per month. If they have the lease, they're paying the lease and they're paying what they're supposed to and otherwise being a good tenant. We, we, we're not in the position to micromanage people's use of it.
Is there a way, Mr. Attorney, to look at those to see, I mean, I, I'm not saying I agree, I don't disagree with you, but I don't disagree with him either. I mean, I don't think that we should be leasing out hangars for, say, storage facilities. Like that's what they have, storage units. Um, is there a way that we could look at our lease to see if there's language in there to prevent those type of situations so that if we do have a good tenant that would be using the hangar as a hangar on a daily or weekly basis that, you know, maybe we could help?
The, the problem becomes practical, because I've talked over this with Mr. DuHaim, is what do they have, I mean, then it gets real iffy in terms of enforcement, because do we have people check in? Do they write in? But the nice thing about having a hangar is I don't have to do that. It's my plane. I can go and get in my plane and fly where I want, come when I want, deposit when I want. And so what's the mechanisms of doing that in a way that doesn't offend, you know, personal sensibilities of I've paid my rent, I get to do what I want. But then, so if the board wants us to change the lease and say, you know, every time you go into your hangar, we, we need to have a check in at the front so we can monitor who's using it, we can do that. But we haven't had that. It just, just seems kind of counter to what it's trying to do.
Well, might I make-
I would, I would just like to say, sir, that, uh, if the hangar is not, not being used for what it was meant to be for, which is to be an act of contributing to the health of our, our airport, uh, it might as well be a self-storage. Take the wings off from it and-
I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing with your premise. I think you're exactly correct. I understand, I understand the want to and it's a, it's a supply and demand issue. But, you know, certainly we can't change mid-lease. I think we all agree with that, right? And to the extent, yes, we are rewriting the leases, but I'm just trying to think of a, the, the issue comes up and I've kind of brainstormed this with our airport manager, because he's a, just a guy out there. I mean, he's got kind of part-time help, but it's just him for all intents and purposes. And how is he going to, what is a reasonable way to expect him to enforce something like this? And then how do we throw somebody out?
Well, might I offer a suggestion so we don't have to sit here all night?
Right. I understand. I'm just, I just wanted the board to know that this has been addressed.
Mr. Wing, Wing, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wing, might I make a suggestion that maybe you and Mr. DuHaim get together and along with our county attorney and be included in that? And, and so when these leases do come up for renewal, that there is a new lease that maybe makes the tenant a little more of a contributing tenant versus just a, say, a storage tenant. Would that be good?
Yeah.
Because I mean, there's, I think what he's saying is we got liabilities, so we can't just go kick people out when they're paying their lease. If they have a lease that doesn't say that they have to use their airplane. So then they could potentially sue the county. Hey, it doesn't say I have to use my airplane. I'm doing what I'm supposed to be. But, but when that lease renews, like, now we got a new lease. You, now you have to start using your airplane. You can't just store stuff in there.
Yes, uh, uh, what I would like to just end with is, uh, I did read a copy of the lease and it does say that the county has the ability to give a 30-day notice and, uh, close the lease out without, without any question. So-
Well, I, I, again, I'm going to defer that to the county attorney. That's kind of a legal matter.
Yes, sir.
Because that's where we would end up with legal.
That's what the lease said. And I didn't know if you were aware of it, but anyway.
I, I, I don't own an airplane. I haven't read a law.
Anyway, I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for coming.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, to the board and everyone here, I, I've been to one of the breakfasts out there and, uh, I wish I'd known they were coming here this evening. I'd have better prepared myself as well to help have these discussions. Uh, we did touch on a few of these. The one time I was there, I noticed y'all didn't let Mr. Ed talk, because he'd still be up here talking right now. But, uh, but they, they have a good group. And, and the group that's met, that I met the day I was there are made up of, of commercial pilots, uh, our armed force pilots, retired, uh, privately hired pilots. I mean, there's just a, a, a board of people out there, uh, of knowledge, should I say, of, of wealth of knowledge. So, um, but I appreciate you guys coming. And I think it's something like, like the chairman said, I think it's, uh, the attorney needs to look at it, get Mr. John more involved. Uh, I don't mind getting involved with this. I do think our airport's the gateway to our community. And, uh, I think there's a lot that we can do and be better. So I just wanted to mention that. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Mr. Scott, do you have something?
Yeah, just, just for record, we do have an airport committee. Uh, Alan Rice with EA is on that committee as, as the representative and representative of the committee. So-
Are y'all familiar with Mr. Rice? I don't know if Mr. Rice here? Okay, okay, good. So he's on, I guess he is on the committee. So maybe some of the lease, the lease rewriting could be funneled through that airport committee. Fair enough. Um, next public comment card I have is Mr. Steve Fontana. I'm going to read your name and address since you got it on here. 2118-144th Street.
That's correct.
Live Oak, Florida.
That's right. And two, two things I want to talk about, actually, they're connected. Um, the legislated hearing, it was supposed to be last, last Tuesday or Tuesday, it was Tuesday before, last Tuesday, I think. And that was supposed to be at the, um, we thought it was going to be at Live Oak City Hall. Um, that's been rescheduled. It is going to be, I thought it was going to be here. Correct me if I'm wrong. It is going to be here? That's what the, uh, Corey Simon's office told me that it'll be here on Monday at 2:00 PM. So both Senator Corey Simon and Representative Schalf, Schaff will be here at 2:00 PM. Um, I recommend you come a little bit early, maybe research some bills that you may want to give an opinion on. And one thing I want to talk about is you may want to give an opinion on, the reason why the, uh, the session was canceled this past week was because the governor called a special session in the state and, um, it was for immigration reform. And the legislature turned around and decided to hold their own special session. So there's a little bit of, uh, give and take between the governor and the legislature right now. Um, so you may want to form your opinion on that. The governor, he pulled out the bully pulpit and he went on Fox News and you could see, just search on Governor DeSantis, um, and Trump Act or whatever they called the thing. Um, and you could see his opinion on it. He's very strong on it. And his opinion is that they're basically trying, the legislature is trying to take his power with, um, to enforce the law, in this case, immigration law, and work with the federal government and give it to, I believe it's our agric, agric, agricultural secretary. So they want to take power out of the governor's office and move it someplace else. Um, for what reason? I, you know, you could speculate why, maybe different opinions on how to do things. Uh, but if you have an opinion on that, I encourage you to come on Tuesday because, um, I was in communication with both Corey Simon's office and with Jason Schaff's office, and both of them voted for this legislation. Um, and if you look at, if you watch the video of Fox News with the governor, he's definitely opposed to it. Um, so I'm interested in, in your opinion, because it does affect, uh, the whole state. I don't know how much it affects our county. In my opinion, the sheriff should have authority over, uh, federal law enforcement coming into the county, but that's, uh, that doesn't seem to be addressed anywhere. Um, so with that said, I'll, I'll just, uh, shut up and, and maybe you can express your opinion if you're familiar with what happened last week at the, at the state and whether you're with the legislature or you're with the governor, because they're definitely at odds right now. Oh, the other thing is, one last thing. Um, so they did vote for this, this supposedly Trump Act. Now, now the, the governor says that that's a misnomer, that they're calling it a Trump Act because this is the way Trump wants things, but that's not, the governor's saying that's not necessarily true. Um, so the governor has, I believe he said he's going to veto it. So when they go back into session in March, they're going to have a chance to override that veto. And that's what you want to address, is how they're going to vote on that.
Thank you, Mr. Fontana. Appreciate that. So remember, uh, Monday, 2:00 PM here at the judicial annex for legislative hearing with, uh, Representative Schaff and Senator Corey Simon. Next I have, uh, is it John or Jim Van Flight? John? Okay, John Van Flight of 20671, County Road 137. Welcome, sir. How are you?
I'm doing really good. Thank you so much. Appreciate you listening to me. Um, so I'm new to Swanee County and, uh, I have some, I'm new to all this government stuff. I've never been involved with government before. Um, so just different things recently that I've, I've been getting involved, getting a little bit more involved. So, uh, a quick question was, uh, if, if there's, something comes up on your agenda, how would the residents be the best, what would be the best way for us residents to give, uh, rebuttal or additional information to changes that, that you guys would vote on? Is my first question. And then the second question is, uh, if we needed more time, is there an extension process to get more information for something on your agenda?
So I'll answer your first question. What I would say is two things. One, the agenda and the packets posted on our website. And secondly, there's an email chain that if you'll get with, um, Mandy, who works for the Board of County Commissioners over here and the, the really pretty lady in the black.
Okay. I think I spoke with Mandy.
Black coat there.
Yes.
If you will give her your name and email address, there's a email chain that goes out with the agenda and the agenda packet. So if something tickles you that you wanted more information on, um, it'll all be there for you.
Okay. So when something does come on the agenda and, and you guys, I guess, get the agenda packets for whatever the change is going to be, and then we find out later that it's, that it's, uh, something we have to, if we wanted to rebuttal it, how would we get, same, same process?
That agenda goes out usually on a Thursday or a Friday via email for our Tuesday meeting. So you would have three, four, five days to review it. And then what I would recommend you do is one, reach out to your county commissioner and say, hey, Commissioner Hale, I don't, I don't know where you live. Well, I do know where you live, but I don't know what district you live in, but I just, he's a pretty bald-headed guy down here. But, um, hey, Commissioner Hale, I have an issue with item number three on the agenda. I'd like to talk to you about it.
Okay.
Start there. And then if that doesn't, you know, you don't get the, what you want to hear, then come to the board meeting and talk about it here, too.
Okay. So if I, if the, if residents come to the board meeting and, and present their, their ideas, uh, that you would still make the vote on that day?
Unless the board found reason enough to, to table it and postpone it for whatever reason maybe you brought forth.
So if we did have additional things that we wanted to bring up to rebuttal things, okay. All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming. Welcome to the community. You said you were new. Said you were new, so welcome.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so I'm up here from Lando Lakes.
Okay.
If you're familiar with Lando Lakes. Thirty, 33 years ago, I moved to Lando Lakes when it was nice and small like this. I had to move out.
Well, y'all, if y'all keep coming, this ain't going to be nice.
That's what am I concerned. So, yeah, so they ran me out of my, my place. Hopefully I found a nice little place to settle in and I'd like to try to keep it that way and, and try to be involved with the community so we can all keep it nice.
We're happy to have you. Thanks for coming. Yes, sir. Um, next I have, uh, Mr. Luke McInnis of Field Box 367, O'Brien, Florida 32071. Welcome, sir.
So, uh, the bid for the COVID, just want to make sure that's not getting discussed tonight. Correct? It's not on the agenda, but there was some confusion between whether or not it was going to be discussed.
I don't have it on my agenda. Mr. Scott, you have anything coming up on? No, sir. No discussion on that tonight. All right, thank you. Next comment card I have is Mr. Richard Orlassio. Did I say that right? Great. Of 20488, County Road 137, Lake City, Florida.
It's a Lake City address.
Yeah, I know, Lake City address, but you live in Swanee County.
It's truly Swanee County.
Welcome, sir.
Just like, uh, John, I'm a transplant from South Florida. We've been here about five years. Love the county. Uh, couldn't wait to leave, leave South Florida to get to a rural county. Uh, the one question I really have is, when you have a complex decision on matters before the board at times, what influences you the most? Is it mostly for the residents' purposes or for business and development purposes?
You got a specific item in mind?
Nothing in general right at the moment. Uh, this is for future, future information. Nothing specific. It's a general open-ended question. I'm, I'm just trying to find out is to, if it impacted many people, is that a more important thing to the board or does it lean more towards business? The reason I'm saying this is because some particular counties like business and some particular counties don't necessarily like business depending upon how that actually helps the county to grow.
Well, I'll take a hack at it. I think that's a loaded question and I don't know that there's a right or wrong.
I'm not trying to make it loaded.
I don't know that there's a right or wrong answer to that. I think that you can only answer that question on a specific topic, on how you looked at, at this. But in general, I mean, we're elected by the people, so I would say that we try to make the best decision for the people. Now, there may be a situation where, and I'm just coming up with a quick scenario in my head, that there's a, let's just say there's a hotel that's coming in, out by the interstate and it's going to employ 50 people and it's going to put $5 million on the tax rolls, but the three people that live next door to it are absolutely adamant against it and do not want it. Well, is it better for the county and the tax bills for the jobs and those people that would get those jobs and the, the revenue generated and the sales ta, sales tax and the bed tax? Or, or, or do you protect three people? So I mean, you know, I don't really know how to answer that. If anybody else wants to chime in, some of this limb doesn't fall off underneath my feet by myself.
I think the chairman's right. But, but those three people, and I, I believe I speak for the board when I say this, we would do everything to make sure that they were satisfied, even though we had to move forward with it or wanted to move forward with it, that it- though we had to move forward with it, or wanted to move forward with it, that it didn't impose on their daily life the best we could, whether that be with, you know, a setback, or a green, or a barrier, or whatever it may take to be a good neighbor, you know? I mean, you always have everything in mind when you make these decisions. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner White.
A little bit of common sense goes a long way.
Absolutely.
That's what I use.
Do you ever take advisement when something is presented on the board, to table it, to bring it up again at some point in time, if it's too complex to address at the meeting at that time?
We're doing that tonight. We got an item that's on our agenda that we haven't gotten to yet, but it's gonna be tabled.
I looked at your YouTube video, so I know a little bit about what transpires, but it's nothing like when you actually, you know, you're in front of people to find out things.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming. Welcome to the community. My last comment card that I have is Mr. Wayne Hanica. Mr. Hanica, I don't have your address, so you'll have to state that when you come to the podium, please, sir. Mr. Clerk, do you want these comment cards?
Wayne Hanica, one one eight eight three and ninety-third road, Live Oak, representing concerned citizens in North Florida. I've been doing good news things for the last month or so, and I intend to continue that. There's so many good things that happen in this community, and most people don't know about them. So that's really my purpose, is to let people know what's going on, and what are the good things that are happening. Tonight's about Parks and Rec Department. And every time I do this, I sit down with people and I go, wow, I didn't know that. I didn't know you did that. I didn't know we had this much revenue from that. So the Parks and Rec Department has fifteen full-time employees and eighty part-time employees. Locally, they have ninety-eight teams and twenty-four parks that they take care of. Over a million visitors annually. They maintain twelve parks, and I have a complete list here, but I'd be here for a half hour, and you'd go, okay, that's enough. But they also maintain four boat ramps, Heritage Park and Gardens, Swannie River, Greatway, Greenway in Branford, Swannie County Agricultural Complex in Coliseum, and many others. And my favorite part is, they now have seven million dollars in grants going on right now. I like grants because that's free money, it didn't come out of our pocket, it came from the state. Somebody's gonna get it, so we might as well get it. Tournaments, they do fourteen different tournaments through the year, with usually around two-hundred-and-fifty participants at each tournament. That comes out to twenty-eight thousand people come to this county because of Parks and Recs, because they're in another tournament. They generate about twenty-six thousand dollars in revenue from, just from the entry fees, about seventy thousand dollars in concession fees, and I just came up, I keep asking, what's the economic impact, what's that do to our county? How's that help us? So I just came up with a number and said, well, if people come here, they buy gas, they buy food, they stay in a hotel, they spend money in our county, in the city and the county, and just that twenty-eight thousand people, if each of them spent fifty dollars, which I think is pretty reasonable, because I don't think you can go to breakfast, lunch, and dinner two days for less than fifty dollars, that generates one point four million dollars to this county. The Chamber Christmas on the Square, they also help with that. That generates, that has twenty-eight thousand people estimated, so that's another one point four million that's come to us. They also help with All-Board Festival and Wildflower Festival. They do the strawberry, at the Coliseum, they do the strawberry festival, bicycle festival, multi-day events. They do the high school wrestling and weightlifting. And Springs, they get about fifty to a hundred thousand people at the Springs every year. And I'm just thinking, well, if they're at the Springs, if they spent ten dollars apiece, they're probably gonna do that somewhere along the line, for gas, or a sandwich, or a soda, or something. That generates five hundred thousand to a million dollars for this county. So our Parks and Rec Department generates a lot of revenue for this county, for the businesses, for the people here, and I think they do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Hanica, and I don't even see Mr. Fury here to get his accolades. We know where he is at, he is, and we left, Mr. Commissioner White and Mr. Scott and I left earlier, we spent most of the day today in Tallahassee meeting, in front of committee meetings there, lobbying for Swannie County. So Mr. Fury, he stayed the rest of the day, so him and Mr. Norris, that's why they're not here today, just FYI, they're on the way back. But go ahead, Mr. I know you, we saved the best for last, I don't have a comment card, but name and address for the record.
Moses Slepka, one four five eight one hundred, second path.
I'm bracing for a ray of sunshine out of you today. I know you got it.
No.
All right.
It was kind of depressing when I constructed this, and I'll just read it with no comment, because it'd take way too long, that way. And this is accumulation of, well, there's a comment, it's accumulation of months of issues that I wasn't able to express here due to whatever, so I'm gonna read this. The word is out that one of the reasons that this board does not act on some of the beneficial ideas that I present is because I tend to beat the dead horse. If so, that is a shame. Actually, I've considered, the reasoning and interpreted as saying that I continue to point out wrongdoings and expose decisions that are not in the best interest of the taxpayers. If this board's intent is to continue to attempt to silence me, you have failed in the past and will continue to fail. Besides, the dead horse stinks, and eventually folks will question what happens with the horse. Swannie County is a fiscally constrained county with a higher-than-average tax rate and millage rate on its citizens, yet consistently is asking the state for funding, all the while paying the county-employed self-appointed elites sometimes double their peer's salary, such as the head of economic development, Jimmy Norris, getting paid base salary more than double his peers, plus overtime on exempt salary. By population, Florida is the third-largest state in the Union with twenty-three million people. There are a hundred and sixty-five state employees and twenty-eight state departments that Governor DeSantis oversees for a hundred and forty thousand dollar a year salary. This board pays our county administrator a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, plus overtime on an exempt salary, to oversee about three hundred employees in a county of approximately forty-five thousand people. If the self-appointed elites were not making such high salaries and were doing their best for us taxpayers, I would not have this horse to beat. I pledge to you to continue pointing out this stinky carcass until things change. During the last meeting, I pointed out that only one of you attended the Free Constitutional Informational Event hosted by our American Patriots of North Florida group, yet regularly all of y'all, along with several others, attend most of the high-dollar traveling events on all the taxpayers' dollars, though y'all rarely attempt to tighten up and reduce the tax burden on the citizens here. Possibly, if we had offered three hundred and fifty dollar a night rooms and fifty dollar per plate meals, more of you may have attended. It's obvious to many of us that adequate research is not being done to see that we are receiving the best value possible with purchases and contracts. For instance, the four million dollars profit paid to the Chinese national businessmen on the three hundred and ninety acres purchased recently, the double the value price paid for the adjacent land to the rodeo ring in O'Brien, the extra fifty-six thousand dollars approved in the current fire budget for equipment, the unknown amount of waste and excess in the sheriff's budget because none of you are willing to require proof of where our money is being spent, the sixty thousand dollar double-dip requested and paid through Jimmy Norris to Madden Media, the vice, to Madden Media. The vice chairman pledged to have representatives come and defend that charge, but months after stating that, he hasn't done so yet. Somewhere in there, someone accused someone else of lying, seems as though for sure lies are being told. An agenda item to purchase more Mack dump trucks was removed from the agenda, seemingly due to the objection from the public, yet later it was learned that the Chinese Communist Party-owned Mack trucks were purchased at a cost of over forty thousand dollars more per unit than what USA-made Kenworth trucks would have cost us. To the best of my knowledge, the proposed purchases were never brought back to the agenda. The bait and switch on the fifty-five thousand dollar compensation study, which was sold to the people as an efficiency study, this administration has already given out over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual salary increases, mainly to select and self-appointed elites already making as much as six times the average income per capita in Swannie County, and many over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Finally, to the local good old boys that continue to attempt to exclude the Swannie County property owners who were not born here, George William Curtis stated, "A man's country or county is not a certain area of land, mountains, rivers, and woods, but it is a principle, and patriotism is loyalty to that principle." Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Seen none, closed public comment. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, where there are one, two, three, four items on the consent agenda, the items two through five. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Number four, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
Number four.
You need to pull number four for this discussion amongst us?
Yes.
Okay. So I have items two, three, and five. Questions, comments, concerns, or do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Have a motion to approve those items two, three, and five by Commissioner Perkins, a second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, Mr. Clerk, on those three items. Item number four, Mr. Perkins, what's your questions?
This is, ready grant for?
Hill Park.
Hill Park.
Yes, sir.
It's eight hundred and eight, eight hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars for renovation. Well, my question is there that, for the renovation, and I had this spoken with Jason, that he was up there, and it is not a complaint of what he did tell me about, and we talked about it, but it was probably come up later, but I did want to make note of it, not against it, I'm for it, but actually, that I'm a little concerned about having to spend eight hundred and eight thousand dollars on renovation.
Yes.
Now, on that building, that was my concern, you know, that's why I didn't see a scope of what to be done in the write-up. I read through the, the write-up items, and I was just kind of concerned about it, because we get eight hundred and eight thousand, and then we had another hundred and some thousand, that'd be coming from the city that they pitched in for the restrooms, and I think there'll be seventy-five thousand coming from pilgrims, so you're basically almost about a million dollars for renovation. And what I was thinking of was, was to see this maybe not as renovation, but as being a maybe to construct a new building, or some of that nature to make, you know, get more bang for the buck. That's where I'm at.
That's a very good point that you bring up, and I, too, had those questions, I spoke to, I spoke to Mr. Fury about that as well, and I read that scope of work as you did, and didn't find anything really detailed in there. And his intentions are to demo and start over due to the age of the building, but I do believe that he wants to maybe speak to the city first, to make sure there's no objections, because they are, they do have an vested interest in a hundred thousand.
Right, right.
It is in the city, but I would agree with you that it might be best to start over, I don't know how old that building is, but it's fifty-plus years old.
I think it's built in the fifties.
So built in the fifties, so we're knocking on seventy-five years old. It might be best to start over, yes. So, according to Mr. Fury, what he told me was, is he suggested that we go ahead and sign the grant agreement, get the money.
Right, right.
But the scope in the grant agreement isn't, doesn't say we have to renovate or demo and start over. His intention to me was, and Mr. Scott, if I'm wrong, or you've talked to Mr. Fury about this as well, I see you nodding your head, please chime in, but I believe his intent is to start over.
Yeah.
Because I'm with you, I don't think we should put eight hundred thousand into a seventy-five-year-old building. That's just my two cents, start over and get a brand-new building.
My understanding is, our money has a timeline, and it gets spent like the COVID building and others, so we have a timeline to get things done, so that'll weigh into the factor also, but.
Right, I think it gives us to twenty twenty-six.
Right. December twenty-sixth.
Right, right.
To what I would recommend, Commissioner Perkins, I think you bring up some really good points there, because I would say that unless you're opposed, if we could approve this tonight.
Yes, I do agree with that.
And then have some more conversations with Mr. Fury, either you privately or at our next board meeting, about this board's intent on either remodeling or starting over, reconstruction.
I agree.
So this, if you're, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on item number, what item?
Four.
On the board?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the signing of the grant agreement?
So move.
You're in? No, we got Perkins, we got Commissioner Perkins on approval.
Yep.
Have a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioner Perkins, that was great.
Yes, sir.
I would say, just contact Mr. Fury and.
I have, I just wanted to bring it out, so that makes it a little aware.
Yeah, I agree with you, good deal.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the constitutional officers. Are there any constitutional officers in Swannie County wishing to speak tonight? Seen none, we'll move down to staff items. Are there any staff items to discuss tonight of staff? Ms. Carolyn Saft, welcome.
Just want to let you know about a couple programs that are coming up. Fire Rescue goes on a lot of calls to pick people up that have fallen, and so we're running programs down in Branford and in Live Oak. It's called A Matter of Balance, and it's fall prevention. First one in Live Oak starts tomorrow. There's two classes, one at ten, from ten to twelve, and one from two to four. So if you're interested, please call the extension office, see if we can get you in. I also, I'm doing a program on growing tomatoes, seems to be a popular crop, at the library on February twentieth. We're having a chicken and rice fundraiser for four H. We've got some kids that we want to send out to Nebraska for some livestock judging, so we're doing a fundraiser for ten dollars for chicken and rice and dessert roll.
What's the date and time on that one?
That is February twenty-seventh, from eleven A.M. to two P.M. It's ten dollars, and you can pick it up at the extension office.
Okay. So everybody in this room, on the twenty-seventh, you need to buy a ten-dollar chicken and rice dinner for four H, between eleven and two.
That's right.
All right.
And we've got some programs coming up for cottage food laws, so for a lot of the entrepreneurs, there are laws telling you what you can and can't do with your food prep, so if you're thinking about starting a food business, please come see us, so that you don't make anybody sick. So we've got a bunch of other programs coming up. I do want to mention, Mr. Hanica mentioned the Wildflower Festival, that's coming up on May tenth. We are gonna have activities for adults and youth, and we're gonna, we're thinking about trying to have a art chalk on Heritage Trail, so doing murials with chalk art, so come out, we're six thirty to eight thirty, it'll be a family event, be making art. Okay? So that's what I have for you.
Any questions for Ms. Saft?
Mr. Chairman.
If I lay down, will y'all draw me with that chalk y'all have?
They don't have enough chalk.
I draw around you like.
Just the body outline, for the way it's supposed to go.
Do you have any fire for the balance?
I don't have any with me, no.
Okay, is it online, something I can print off, maybe? Is there anything?
Yeah, it'll be on our website, our Facebook page.
For flowers?
No, the balance.
Matter of balance. Trying to help all our friends with fire rescue, so.
Commissioner Perkins has a question, I think.
I was gonna ask, were you sending out any reminders for that, or you sending out through our email reminders on it?
We send it to your emails, but I'm not sure, you guys, look at your emails.
I do.
You do?
Have to be a fan.
All right, we'll make sure we send it to you.
And also, only, you were saying about maybe the community garden, and we spoke about that one time before, I think some of you don't know about the community garden.
Right, so there, there is a community garden at Philip's Pines, or Pine, yeah, Philip Pines, that we started with the Health Department last year. Philip Pines, um, that we started with the Health Department last year, and there is interest in some more community gardens. We're gonna have a workshop on how to start a community garden very soon, because people, people have, it's a great idea, but you better have someone that is gonna be in charge and stick with it. And so, everybody's enthused at the beginning, but when the weeds start popping up, your bodies, you're kind of like the Lone Ranger standing there. So, um, we want to talk about that before you invest a lot of time and energy in that.
And you're saying Philip Pines, is that off of Walker?
Yes.
Okay, Walker and Maple, turn off of Walker to Maple, and follow it around to, at the end of the project section, and there's the gardens there.
And it's, you can see it from Walker.
Off of Walker, she runs.
You can see the, there's four raised beds there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Perkins said he'd be out there pulling weeds for you.
All right.
To get some tomatoes.
Oh, yeah.
Fried green tomatoes.
Y'all want to see a perfect yard, just go by Mr. Ford's house over there. He's got the perfect yard up there.
He got some greens back there.
He does have a nice yard. I, I've told him that many times. I admire, admire his amaryllis when I come home from work. Um, thank you, Mr. White, or Commissioner White, for the tree that's being donated to Heritage Park. Um, that's going in tomorrow, so that long-lost tree that we've talked about for a little bit, um, it's actually gonna be installed tomorrow, so, thanks.
So those that don't know, Commissioner White is donating a tree to the county at Heritage Park tomorrow, and planning that in honor of his deceased mother.
Yes.
Very good.
And we'll take good care of it.
Thank you, Ms. Carolyn. Any other staff members present wishing to speak? None. Seen none, Commissioner items?
Can y'all have one?
I, I have one, and I printed the email here. I have a constituent new to my district due to the redistricting, but, and I wanted to bring this to y'all's attention, I've talked to Mr. Meeks about it, um, the Petersons, and he asked that maybe I'd bring it to you guys' attention, about waiving a RV permit. Their home was flooded during Debbie. It was their outbidding, outbuilding, their home was flooded in twenty-twenty-twelve due to Debbie. Their home sits on a, a subfloor. In Debbie of twenty-twenty-four, all of their outbuildings were flooded. They have obtained all the permits to move their home further back on their property away from this area, what they thought was out of the flood zone, and now with the new flood maps and difference, they got some flood issues. The permit to do, to stay in their RV while the home is being relocated to the different part of their property, same parcel, different part, the, the fee to that's three-hundred dollars. And their concern is that, you know, it's some hardship, they're paying all the money, haven't moved. They have asked me if I could waive the three-hundred, I think, well, I, I can't waive the three-hundred, but I believe I, the board could, I thought we had that...
Do it as to a category.
Huh?
You could do it as to a category, so for that...
I thought we had waived some of those fees under the hurricane, like, but I think that was just like electrical and construction permits, not the group permits.
Right, so if you want to extend those for people who need it for the hurricane, the board certainly has that authority.
So, Mr. Meeks, if I'm wrong, you're aware of this situation too, because I talked to you about it, so I'm, I'm bringing it up to the board, saying, hey, do you guys, what can we do? Can we potentially waive this three-hundred-dollar RV fee so they can stay in their RV while they move their home and set it back up temporarily? Did I say it right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's a, it's a, it's a one-year temporary use permit, based on their timeframe from, from what it looks like, maybe four to six months is what they're looking at in the transition We don't, we, we don't have a, uh, we don't have a ton of people that are in that situation. We have dealt with, um, through the FEMA program for the temporary housing that they were doing, we were doing a permit fee waiver for that, so it's really very similar to, to that. So, you know, like, if, if the board was going to do that, you know, you could, you could extend this like, uh, uh, the attorney said would be, you know, if we're, if we're dealing with like temporary use permits related to storm damage for repairs to their home or something like that, we can extend that, that waiver of that permit fee.
For further information, they've owned the house since nineteen, they own the property since nineteen-seventy-nine, and they built in nineteen-ninety-three, and had never seen the amount of water on the property until the two Deibys came, so...
So they're not actually looking at the property, they're not actually looking at it in a flood zone, just kind of looks like that there's a, a low-line depression that's there. So when you have, uh, the amount of rain that we had with tropical storm Debbie and then Hurricane Debbie, that's just the natural flow of the water. So they do have an area of the property that I believe is, uh, not been affected, uh, that they are...
They're moving the home.
Doing a home relocation permit there. So we have a foundation...
I went out and looked at it, and then she, I got that email from them, so anyway, personally, I'd like to waive the three-hundred, they're not trying to leave, they're just trying to move their house.
So what, you just need a motion for that?
Attorney.
Mr. Meeks, what's the best way to phrase the category for your office to process it?
So rather than an individual, so right now, it'd be a waiver of permit fees, uh, for the one-year temporary use permit related to storm damage for repair.
Waive that.
Fair enough.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, gentlemen, I will let the Petersons know tonight. Any other Commissioner items? On county attorney?
I've spoken enough tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Amen. Um, any consultants present wishing to speak? Any of the counties, okay. General business, which was item number six, we've tabled that, and the reason for tabling that is we are, the county's in, uh, the process of obtaining an actual survey for the legal description on that property. The survey's not quite ready yet, so we're gonna table that until two weeks from now. Hopefully, that survey will be ready by then for the legal description on the property. Um, item number seven is additional agenda items, none. Well, number eight, administrators' comments and concerns. Mr. Scott?
Just want to give you a few updates on Public Works, Seventy Street, Seventy-Six Street, the contractor is doing base repairs, so the construction has begun, and also clearing for utility relocates. Uh, the one-sixty-ninth sinkhole, I know we've got some concerns with that, and that's under, working on the contract with the, um, low bidder, or the bid that was awarded on that project also. January forty-nine, uh, the record, the bids recorded, uh, from Anderson, Columbia, and so we're just looking to get that project started very soon. In-house projects that we've been working on, Railroad Street, they got beat up real bad from the flooding when the DOT rerouted the traffic to bypass the flooded US-90. They just got finished paving about six-hundred linear feet of that today. And, um, they started on Hundred Street and Allen Park, so, um, Eighty-first Street will be next, or Eighty-first will be next, and, um, just want to give you the update on, of those things. We had our first kickoff meeting from the Evergreen Company that was awarded bid for the salary study. Had the first kickoff meeting for that Monday, I believe it was. And, um, just a reminder again that the delegation hearing is, is going next Monday, the tenth, at two PM here. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Last item on the agenda is board members' comments. We'll start, did I start with Hale last time? So we'll start from this end this time. Commissioner Perkins, closing comments, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just, uh, nothing, I haven't any thing, but I just say thank you to all of our department here, to all departments for all your work, and thank God that we see a lot of our workers here today, tonight, here with us in here, we do appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Hanekah, for the encouragement, and we thank you all of our consultants being here with us and supporting us so much, and we do appreciate all y'all. Thank Commissioner Fleming being here tonight, and Ms. Fleming being here tonight with us, looking so lovely over there. Thank you. And Councilwoman Robinson in there, she had a town hall meeting on this past Saturday, and, uh, at the, uh, Douglas Center, had a, had a pretty informative, uh, thing, they had her code enforcement officer there, along with her CRA person there, director, maybe title, had a great thing there, so just thank you to all of our department, thank everyone, thank all y'all, have a safe trip home.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Perkins.
Commissioner Perkins on that, we appreciate staff and everything they do, and appreciate everybody for coming, and, uh, probably, everybody keep Bart Lips in their prayers, he's, he's, uh, he's having a tough time, he's on life support now, so.
You good? Commissioner Hale?
All right, yeah. Obviously, on the heels of that, again, thank every one of our employees. A lot of you folks don't know, there's a few in here today, uh, they work hard, they make us look good, they do. The hard work and the dedication they have to this community is, is, it goes unnoticed sometimes, but it don't buy us guys, I want y'all to know that. But, uh, with that being said, I see some city officials here too, I appreciate you guys being here, yep, one behind you back there, one of your council people, but, uh, thank y'all for being here, and, and keep Daryl Harrell and his family in your prayers. Uh, he's going through a rough time right now, and folks, we just need to pray for each other and pray for this nation, so, thank you.
And Jalen Showa.
I'll just echo all that, but I'd like for you to keep Stacy Griffith, which is a town council, uh, member in Branford, her husband passed away...
Oh, wow.
This past week, at a very young age. And, uh, just keep her in your prayers, and, uh, that's all I got, Chairman.
She's usually here everywhere, where she was at. I'll say to echo everyone else's sentiments, um, great staff, I see some of our, our guys here, man, y'all make us look good, um, we appreciate everything y'all do for us and the citizens out there. Y'all work hard, and have worked really hard with all these hurricanes, but we sure appreciate y'all. The Flemmons in the house tonight, welcome, welcome. And, um, City of Live Oak officials, I see Mr. Fury, you're here. Man, you missed all the accolades tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Man, next time, be on time. Anyway, if I don't have anything else, guys, just thank all y'all for coming, we appreciate it.